You just gotta pick your year you want to be good.
Should we start even though it's our?
Somebody else is there. And they were, you know, they said they're so. We ran down there, I went down to meet down there.
Twenty seconds.
Columbus, where we had some potential down there.
Oh, yeah.
They run the good team. And then they run the 11th, 12th, 13th, 14th guy. And, and when, when they came over the hill about a mile. Not counting the top 10. The first five guys come over the hill in the second, 11th, 12th, 13th, 14th.
I don't know why she's not responding to me about.
We did. It was a good.
I mean, it's always good to go.
And I think.
Here the information that I've been working on.
Everybody's not staying on my team move around. We're all pretty good.
Yeah.
It's like a deal.
Friends with like other school board.
Maybe she'll stay there tonight.
Right.
She may be there.
HSE actually has a third full board as a number anywhere.
Ready?
Where are we? I would like to call our.
Let's feel the fourth work session to order and start with a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You know, you got some.
Thank you. And now a moment of silence.
Country winner, Alec in his bunny to somebody else.
All right. First up, under discussions, we have our student services wellbeing screener.
Thank you.
Yes, I'm Julie Packer, executive director of student services. We all know each other, but just for the sake of the audience, and I'd like to introduce Maria.
Hi, everyone. I'm Maria Huber. I'm the project aware coordinator. And the survey that Julie and I will be talking about is being fully funded. Or planned to be fully funded through our project aware grant.
So today we're just going to talk about compassionate action and a huge part of our practice is being data informed. And so I'll draw your attention to the slides. Again, everything that we do is grounded in our school board rules. Our strategic plan of compassionate care and support. I highlighted those specific areas in the strategic plan that align with the idea of giving an assessment or survey, excuse me, to determine students' feelings of safety and belonging and use this data to inform practices. So this is part of our strategic plan. And then again, project aware goal really rooted in one of the goals is our sense of belonging and emotional regulation. And provide ongoing professional learning for staff on effective behavior response strategies and mental health support. And so the first few slides are just going to ground our work and how it aligns to the state model. And as you can see, the state has decided that there are five characteristics that are most important to students' lifelong success, academic mastery, career post-secondary readiness, communication and collaboration, work ethic, civic, financial and digital literacy. And our work and survey will be rooted in communication and collaboration and work ethic.
Hi, sorry.
No, we need no apologies. Again, I wanted to just point out that the mental health aspect of the work is to cultivate trusted relationships between students and school staff, provide access to school-based mental health services and community providers, and engage parents and students in bullying prevention. And this comes from the advancing comprehensive school mental health work. We know that this work helps provide a safer school for all students. Some core features of comprehensive support, so schools are natural settings for collaboration across partners to promote student wellbeing. And so we, again, want to hear how students are feeling about collaboration, how the use of the multi-tiered systems of support, screening and referral and evidence-based and emerging best practices are supporting our students. And so this survey really highlights the use of screening and referral, although please note that it is non-identifiable. So the survey that we give students will not be identifiable. And we'll say that several times, just to reiterate that. Again, not only, you know, thinking about mental health, but also school counseling and the American standards of school counselors. There are a lot of standards rooted in mindsets for students. Some of the questions that you'll see in this survey really revolve around a student's feeling of safety, a sense of acceptance. Do they have self-confidence in their own ability to succeed? A lot of the questions support that. And then again, this just aligns with our behavior standards for student success. And again, these are all key components of a comprehensive student services program where we use data to inform the work that we do. We don't just, oh, they seem like they're not doing well, or we have a hunch, but we really want to know how students are feeling. Much in the same way that we gathered and I shared at the September board meeting about staff surveys and feelings surrounding mental health in our district. So we wanted a survey that was rooted in these three areas. You know, is it accurate? Can we trust the results? Is it well researched? We are going to get data to see if our, we call it tier one in education, but it's the practice and the work that we do for all students. That's what that means. So we want a survey that lets us know, just kind of a dipstick to let us know by grade level, school and across the district, is the work that we're doing surrounding behavior and culture and climate and students feeling like they belong, is it working? Is what we're doing really like, we think students are behaving better or coming to school, our attendance is great, but is it really working? We want to be consistent, so we wanted a survey that had the same procedure format across all 10 schools, so K-12. And we wanted something that was quick. We don't want to take instructional time away any more than we have to, to make sure that we can get a sense of how students are doing. So this survey, Maria's going to get into the nuts and bolts of the survey, but it takes probably 20 to 30 minutes to take, depending on the age group. So we want to assess less and teach more. And that's just across the board. So take a look, you've seen this inverted pyramid before, so we spent a lot of the work last year really developing that top row best practices, and we are now working with counselors and social workers on year two, tier two. So if you think of the top row as 95% of our students responding to the interventions that we have in place for what's best for all students, that next level would hopefully be about 4% of our students and how they're responding. These are ideal numbers. Sometimes it feels as if 80 students are responding and we have 20%. So you don't want that because we don't have the capacity to support that. And then the larger bottom part of the pyramid would be tier three, which is another academic term, just means students need more support beyond, more targeted and long-term support for, you know, for, for our students in tier three, I guess is the best way to say that. I try not to use tier one, two, tier three, but that's what we say all the time. Again, focus on belonging and emotional regulation. So this is a part of our Noblesville strategic plan. We're aiming for February for this survey. We hope to do it, right now principals are letting us know when they would like us to have that. We are requiring opt-in. February is the earliest. We can do it if we follow Indiana code for opting into survey. So what that means is we will provide parents, we will be completely transparent, we'll provide them access to the survey. They will see it, they will be able to review it, and then they will opt their student in. And we will have 21 days to do that, and then we will remind them of this. That date is January 5th. So if we start in December 15th, 21 days, and then January 5th, we will ask them again, do you want your student to participate in this survey? Again, it's not identifiable. We hope you do. Then we will wait 10 more days, and then parents have essentially opted in. They can still decline anywhere up to the, you know, the final day of the, or the day of the survey, but we assume their parents don't reach out and they have opted in.
And can I add to that? So that, those windows that Julie mentioned are outlined explicitly in Indiana code. So we must give parents this first 21-day window to consent or decline participation of their student in the survey. Any parents who don't respond, either consenting or declining, we are required to give them that follow-up reminder, and then they have those 10 calendar days. So the February screening is because we backwards planned, and in fact, we've made our windows slightly longer because this is the first time we'll be offering this screener or this survey. So it's actually a little bit more, more conservative than, than Indiana code, but we want to be as transparent and open as possible.
So it's also a last year new board policy, board seat 225.
So just to confirm, if they don't respond to the second notification, then you assume they opt in?
Correct, but at any point they can contact the, the school or use, we're going, we're going to use electronic consent form. At any point they can still complete that form and say, I consent or I decline.
Right.
But if there's no response at all by the time the student screens, they're considered opted in.
Okay.
Per Indiana code.
Okay.
This will be a electronic link on their iPad, and we are setting it up so students whose parents have said, no, we don't want you to participate, they won't have access to that link. The technology department is helping us do that.
What will the students be doing who, who don't opt in?
Great, excellent question. So we are informing, we have in our mind for the principals who's going to be doing this, and so those folks aren't aware yet, but it's, they will have lesson plans designed for students who are not doing it. Again, it's only, you're looking at, you know, those times in the day that are already carved out within that 20 to 30-minute period, so we're not taking away instructional time. Or if it's in, for example, a tech class at the elementary school, they'll have tech activities to work on instead of the survey.
Okay.
Well, how many, how many people might opt out once? Figure, do we know? I mean, I didn't have the course.
Well, I guess I don't know.
Yeah.
It'll be my first time delivering a survey in Noblesville schools, so I don't have a lot of experience. It's also not identifiable. So I feel in some ways, you know, there's less of a, maybe a fear or risk or whatever holds someone back from this information, that, that fear isn't there because it's not identifiable.
So if it, if it's not identifiable, how are you going to know who to address if there are issues or concerns that come up out of this survey?
So it's very important to recognize that it is really that universal survey across the board. It's just a screener for us to see, okay, this grade level seems to have this, you know, these results. Students may be, you know, that sense of belonging and maybe that grade level can identify that, or their responses. Our students feel really safe, then you look at the school and then we'll be able to look at the district. But the way the law is currently set up, when you use a third-party vendor, it's very tricky and we can't have that identifiable information.
Right, so the narrowest that you could get would be the school and the grade.
Like that's the. Because we didn't want to go to the classroom because how off-putting or upsetting that might be. Why do I have all these red and I can't do anything about this? You know, what is it? So we wanted to keep it very much, very high level. How is the work that you're doing for all students? How are students responding? You see newsletters, you know, the Miller Way or, you know, a Tiger, how am I doing as a PAU student, a Hawk? You know, all of those behavior standards that they deem to be important. How are the students responding to that? Wow, look, our students really feel safe at school.
So the closest you could get to identifying, if you want to call it that, is building level or grade level?
The grade level.
Okay, okay.
So students will select their school and their grade level first, and so that's how we'll get their response.
Okay.
There won't be any clever link or class link that won't be in any way identified, or I'm sorry, tied to Power School, for example. That's how we're getting the students graded. It will be that they have to self-select. So there could be some error in that, but that's to protect them and in line with the law that says no identifiable information can be collected.
Okay.
And we're hoping it will be another data point. In the way that attendance is, the way that discipline referrals, it's a more general data point, you know, admittedly. But we're hoping that it will give us some information to see if the work, if students are responding to the behavior work.
Okay.
And hopefully, over time, we would be able to use it.
I think for those parents who have had kids in the district for a minute or two, prior to your joining us, they're automatically going to think, oh, this is another panorama survey. I'm not doing it. Can you tell us how this compares, aside from the fact that it doesn't identify anyone?
Yes, we're going to get it about two slides, we're going to get into the survey, and I would love to continue to address that in full transparency, how we can continue to explain to parents where it's going to live in all these different places, at the school level, at the district level, so parents can feel very comfortable.
Okay, so I'll sit back and be patient.
Well, no, no, it's good. No, it's good. I, I just think we'll get into that a little bit more. Again, this is all rooted in the importance of student sense of belonging. Everything I read, in fact, Dr. Rich sent us an article yesterday on AI. He sent us an article on cell phonies. Everything involving students is really rooted in their feeling a sense of belonging. And that sense of belonging then connects to student achievement. And so it's very important that we get a sense of the work that we're doing and, and, and why we're tying it to a survey in this way. So we can really tell how our students mentally are doing. There's a lot of pressure on academics and we support our students being successful and achieving, but we also want to make sure we're taking care of and paying attention. And to your point, we have a lot of really, really strong counselors and social workers who probably already can identify some of the, the more, you know, that one or three or four percent of students that are really struggling. But some of the others, kids, we want to make sure across the board are being taken care of.
Well, and I will, just to add a comment, I love, and I've already told you this, that it's opt-in, not an opt-out, so that you're automatically in if you don't pay attention. So I love that we've reversed that.
Yes, we, we are following the law. We spent a lot of time, we vetted this through our attorneys and really wanted to make sure that this was a great first experience, so that we could move maybe in time if laws change to a more, you know, you know, a more identifiable experience, I guess. So I'm going to turn it over to Maria, and she's going to talk a little bit about our survey and the company that she spent a lot of time vetting and working with.
Yeah, yeah. I think one thing to, to add additionally is the, the work around tier one or all student supports has been a major focus in the last two years, yet that's really hard to measure. And in the strategic plan, there is named sections of compassionate care and support related to assessment and using data to inform our universal and targeted practices. So yes, we can look at attendance, yes, we can look at discipline data to try to measure that, but that is ultimately adult-driven, and it's really hard to know how students feel about all this work and frankly, all this money we're pouring into tier one support. So that's a little bit more of the rationale. But in terms of the survey, it comes from a company called Satchel, and it's called Satchel Pulse. It was selected for a variety of reasons, but one is that it is available for students as young as kindergarten to, to take. They have very easy to understand questions. The experience is user-friendly, and Julie will have a couple of slides. You can see what that experience is. And it is differentiated for our K-2 students versus our older students. I love that you can, students can click on the language that they prefer from a dropdown menu, and that there's text-to-speech for all the questions. Unfortunately, it is funded through our, our project aware grant through 2028. So there is a spreadsheet linked. I, I try to make sure you all have access to it, but.
Sorry.
So that spreadsheet has the survey items and the different ways the, the items or questions, or they're truly sentences. How they are different. Elementary versus middle versus high.
This is my life.
Yeah.
Oh, my goodness. I had to update it the other day.
Oh, really?
Good job.
Thank you. And you'll send us this packet?
We will, and you will have this. So I just wanted you to see on the left-hand side that, you know, where the domain lives, decide you have self. You can't read this, I understand that, but the self-awareness, the social awareness, self-management, responsible decision-making and relationship skills. And so the, well, and I'm sorry, and then we also added sense of belonging because this is part of a project aware grant. And so, for example, for the standard question, relationship skills, I get along well with other, well, that's not a good example. Those are all the same. Okay, for responsible decision-making, a standard question is, I consider all the options and their consequences when making a decision. Elementary would read, I can think about all the choices when making a decision. Middle school, I consider all the options and their consequences when making a decision, and that's the same for high school as well. So parents will have access to this. They can see, you know, in the way that you will be able to, can see all the questions that we're asking.
So one of the major upsides of using a third-party vendor, you can go back, or, or using a company that has done this research is those items that are all grouped into the same domain are research. Satchel worked with Johns Hopkins in particular, but research to show the validity and reliability. So while I know some other school districts in Indiana are creating their own survey, there is a potential that a student could be flagged or missed because those items are not measured to be reliable and valid. So the reason there are five items per domain is because if a student answers those questions slightly differently, then that decreases the validity. So when we see the results, we won't see student results, but when we see the grade level results, we can trust that those are accurate and reliable, and we can make planned decisions from those. So that was a lot of the conversation Julie and I had, you know, should we try to do this on, on our own? And I, I firmly believe that this is the best way to serve our kids and to make sure that we're not, or avoiding this flip to the crack phenomenon.
And with the grant, you know, allowing us, we wanted to do, you know, provide the very best, build buy-in, and then, you know, maybe someday if the finances aren't there, we will have to create our own. But we really want to create the best-case scenario so people do feel comfortable who maybe didn't feel comfortable in the past.
So you can see here, this is a screenshot of one of the survey items. I think before I act, even when I am upset, this is the third to 12th grade view. So on the top right, you can see the dropdown. It says English here, but again, students can select whichever language they prefer. And then there's that text-to-speech, the blue speakerphone. So a student, students will have headphones, as they typically do with their iPads, and can read, or I'm sorry, listen, if that's more comfortable for them. And the smiley face is actually a toggle, and so they will use their, their finger or their cursor to select the smiley face that, that aligns with the Likert scale of strongly disagree to strongly agree.
And Satchel has customized this for us because we cannot use, we cannot have identifiable information. So this is a national company, and so they have, you know, put in the questions that we chose.
Then K to kindergarten through second grade, you can see it's a little bit different. We intentionally, they intentionally, for, for developmentally appropriate considerations, have only five choices for that disagree to agree. And again, the questions are differentiated to be, make more sense for our youngest, youngest students.
And we vetted this with our project aware advisory board, and we had a committee made up of parents, social workers, counselors, school board member, and felt that kindergarten and second grade could handle the 30 questions that were being asked compared to the other assessments that they're, they're given. So that's why we went ahead and did that.
Why is it bad to good instead of good to bad?
I think because they really love to write, but I guess that would have made a difference.
Right, because it's bad, it's bad, better, medium. But it seems like, you know, like, I don't know, that's just me. It seems like it would, that it would be the happy, happy to the other way.
Even the survey I wrote for my dissertation was just like that. That's a, that's a good question. That'd be a good research question.
Okay. It just probably follows the traditional zero to 10 scale, you know.
Zero to 10 is great. This makes sense to me because the higher the number in my brain would equal good, so I need to go further to the right to get how good I feel.
I guess I would hope everybody's happy.
I hear what you're saying.
I just want everybody to be happy. So actually, doing this survey if everyone was happy.
Yeah.
I mean, you could just make him happy across.
There you go.
Pick, pick which happy you want.
Which happy, right?
So any other comments or questions? I know I went through that kind of quickly, but awesome.
I know this was a quick presentation, but it's very evident. You guys put a ton of time and effort into this. Thank you for doing this.
Yes.
We wanted to go well.
And you'll, after this is done and you, you'll report back in the work session or sometime and.
I would love that.
Give us the results. It would be interesting to hear.
I think that we present in March. Again, I think that's.
Oh, our regular meeting?
Yes, and so I'm hoping that this will be the topic of conversation. And again, we, you know, it's an odd time. We would like to do it fall and spring moving forward, but we wanted to start. We felt like we need to start somewhere. Let's just start, kind of make it a trial run, see how it goes. But then really do it again at the beginning of the year. Gives us time to make a difference, change some things, look at our practices, and then do it again at the end of the year to see how well we did, so.
Okay, so your, your goal was to have this done and finished in February, to have it run in February. Do you think that's enough turnaround to include this in the March meeting?
We'll, we'll, we'll have the results immediately.
Yeah, I, I do because it's so.
But to analyze, I mean, is there, are there, I'm assuming there are going to be things that you're going to have to analyze and try to get together and.
I'll be able to definitely share district school, school, excuse me, and I don't know that I'll drill down to grade level. I'm not sure yet. But again, that's a really good point because we want to then open up training for principals and behavior teams and counselors and social workers to really dive into the reports and not just, you know, take a survey for survey's sake and not really use the data that we have from it.
Like, okay, we have the results now. What do we do with it?
But I hope, it's pretty immediate. I would think I'd be able to throw something together pretty quickly, so. There are 24 hours in a day.
And I think you're here 23.
I have an amazing partner in mind. Maria is excellent.
So you plan to have action items if something scores low, for example?
Yes, we would want to look at, you know, self-confidence or one of those domains. We would want to look sense of belonging. And again, we won't be able to know specifically what students, but what is it about what we're doing? Or how could, you know, for example, if a ninth grade score was lower from an eighth grade score, or a sixth grade from fifth grade, you would look at our transition practices and see how students are transitioning. It would be interesting to see any other insight.
Yeah, one, one thing I, I didn't add, it's really the counselor, social work realm, but one of the great benefits of Satchel Pulse is they have an intervention library that's sorted by the different tiers and those domains. So that's where I really see our counselors and social workers, and it is experts to go through their school's results with their administrators and identify action plans. The great thing is, they can select literally from a dropdown, just like you would if you're shopping online, tier one supports for responsible decision-making, and it comes up with tons of interventions that they suggest for students.
That's, that's good.
Yes, and we're doing that work right now. So next, in the next couple of weeks with our counselors and social workers, we are working on that year two, which is our behavior academies. And what does that look like? How do you identify students? What is the entrance criteria? What work are you going to do with them? And then what is their exit criteria? So if I, for example, can't keep my hands to myself, what am I doing to reteach and help support a student? Not just punitive consequences, but how am I really teaching and helping you, so?
So this gets down to the grade level. Does it go, take it a step further by building?
Yeah, it'll go by building, yes. Yes, and so again, it's very much high level, but they are meaning, the majority of the buildings are meaning monthly on behavior. Some are in different places with their behavior teams, but they're also meaning academically. So you'll, you heard Dr. Rich talk about, you know, our alignment of that multi-tiered system of support. So looking at academics, looking at behavior, so when we come together as a group, what interventions are we providing students? So we're trying to intertwine it with everything that we do and align it.
And the questions are like multiple choice. They won't be able to type like an answer. Like, there won't be a follow-up as to, well, why do you feel that way? They won't put it, okay. And so the panorama had like student IDs, right? Is that, maybe you weren't here during.
I wasn't here, but that, this does not, so this.
So that's how it's different in identification?
Yeah, it's completely, they had to completely customize it. So we were on the phone with the president of the company, trying to, and the designer, trying to figure out how to do that because that was a new thing for them, understanding Indiana law, you know, really kind of helping them see that we really mean we can't identify it. So it's not in clever, it's not in any of these other, you know, more user-friendly tools.
Okay.
It's literally a link.
Yeah.
And, but we hope to communicate through Parentsware, through principal newsletters. And we also hope to put it, to answer your earlier question, on the website, you know, the, the law does, or Indiana code does require a, a great deal of transparency. And so we're following those guidelines to do that.
Any questions? Will there be any questions like about tobacco, alcohol, sex, anything like, nothing like that? It's all kind of look like very generalized questions.
Yeah, self-awareness, social awareness, self-management.
Something about your feelings and confidence.
Yeah, and you'll get to see those. I mean, I, I already gave Karen this presentation, so you'll get to read through them. And then if you, if you have any questions or anything, you know, think would be, I would rather know from you earlier than, you know, sending it out to the masses and find out, but.
So when, when you send this out to the parents to opt in, will they also be given a link in that same email to, so that they can preview the questions and then any reminder emails as well?
Yeah.
The items are required to be posted on the corporation's website. So probably direct parents, you know, send parents a, a message and give a language to the principals to send out as well. But directing everyone to the website so there's a single source of information.
Perfect, and they can some familiarize with our website.
Sure, yes.
Yeah.
And students will be doing this during class time, correct? Non-instructional, you said? Like, can they, can high schoolers take it on their own? Like, for example, would there be an option like, this is your homework that has to be turned in by tomorrow, and they could do it at home? Or in their study hall, or, or do, does it have to be conducted during? Like, do they all have to take it at the cert, at the same time in that classroom, or?
Definitely elementary, we have a plan for that during their tech class. Middle school would be, you know, their SLT or their EAS time, and we're working with Janay to find that least intrusive instructional tech. But we want to ensure that they all take it, and so by just having a set time to do it, then you know, like, okay.
Right.
You know, a start and stop.
Because they may not do it at home.
Yeah, right, and they'll forget.
Yeah, and from a high school level, if they do it during AL. Yeah, from a high school level, if they do it during A L, then not all students stay at school for A L. So then they would just have to be trusted that they're going to do it at home or wherever they are during that period, but.
With the toggling, I mean, we really do feel like, and the, the questions really are that short, they could probably get it done in 20 minutes is our guess. Now, we didn't have like a, you know, a, a face validity session where we had kids come in and take it to tell us, but we're guessing around 20 minutes. So we hope that with given the, as much time that we could carve, you know, 20 minutes or so to do that.
You can skip questions too if they want and then require, fill each question or anything.
Each item requires an answer and that's because of the reliability between the, the answers.
No, yeah, makes sense.
Basically doing a factor analysis to determine the areas where students are strong and where they're weak. And you have to ask that multiple times in order to do that.
I think it's good because a lot of those tier one kids do get missed or looked over and they may have stuff going on that they don't talk to their parents about. And, you know, they're kind of flying under the radar. So anything we can do to kind of help the general masses, you know?
I agree, I agree, thank you.
And you just don't want to miss something that, yeah. I'm always kind of surprised when I hear about things about certain students, like my kids' friends, where I'm like, why did I never guess that they were struggling about that? And, or with that, you know, so I think it's good to keep an eye out.
And to normalize it, and they also have access to mental health lessons that we do over here. And so again, just sort of, and you saw from, you know, adults felt really confident that kids do take care of other kids.
They do.
That are struggling, so, but again, we are, all become really good at wearing masks and so we want to support kids.
But if they see that resource right there in front of them, they may, then they can utilize that and bring help, so.
That's our hope, you're speaking our language.
So what would happen if a parent did opt their student in, but the student just hasn't taken it?
Well, I mean, we won't know because it's, we don't have any identifiable information.
Never mind.
But that's okay, it's a good question, we found ourselves doing things like that, like, oh wait, we won't know, because they don't, it's not identifiable, so.
The best way for us to know is A, for it to be during the school day.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay, so that is a fair question.
Yeah, and then to be able to, to, yeah, I guess to track attendance for that, that period. Oh, the other thing I was going to say is because we're asking each school's admin team to let us know the specific dates that they are doing the survey within the month of February, that'll help us because we are taking on the coordination of the opt-in, opt-out form. So that's not happening at the school level, that'll happen at the district level and we'll give those opt-out lists to the schools. So it's one less logistical hurdle for schools to manage. And so if I know that Stomi is screening on the 13th and 14th, that will help me to organize and get them the list of opt-outs. Then we can cross-reference attendance that day too.
Yeah.
We wanted to take the lift and the burden off the school so that, because they have Ireland checkpoints, they have a lot of, you know, new curriculum and things like that. We wanted this to just feel really seamless.
And the letter that goes out if, if the parents have questions, who do they address the questions to? One of you, the principal, who, who is the contact for questions?
That's good, well, we were thinking us.
Yeah.
Okay, I don't know if that's a good idea.
It makes sense since you're running it and if you're in charge of the opt-in, if you're in charge of opt-out, if that would make.
First of all, it's only 10,100 people.
Right.
And then again, if there are any, we have to have by Indiana Code agreements procedure and of course, that way, you have to, anybody had a problem, they would, you know, I put myself down as that. But I actually think it's just based on the response we've had, I think it will go pretty well. And, and people, there's no judgment if they say no, I mean, there's no, you know, you say yes and then, or no, you'll be able to accept or decline, so.
This feels very different than.
Good, it does, for sure, yeah. Good, we wanted it to.
Very good, yeah.
I don't think you're going to hear for many of it.
Yeah, there's always a handful, but you never know, yeah.
I think you've been very thoughtful in the approach and the process, I think this will feel very different.
Okay, and we'll make sure that if we hear anything, once the letters start to go out, though, we'll, we'll let Dan know and make sure that, yeah.
I mean, I wasn't involved at the time when the panorama stuff came about, but, I mean, I was as a parent.
Sure.
But I like how this feels compared to how that felt as a parent.
Yeah.
Okay, any, anything else?
So we'll, we'll send, we'll send this slide deck, is what you sent us, right? I haven't looked at it yet.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so we'll just send this entire slide deck to you, it links you to the survey itself, you can review at your leisure.
Okay, and we should all take it and see what happens.
Yes, my schedule link is updated, I'm going to make sure you guys have it.
We can all take it?
Yes, and we'll say, my only, as a parent, when we did the other surveys, my only concern, which I think would still be the same, but I, I feel better about it being opt-in instead of opt-out, is that, you know, there are students out there who are perceived anyway. I mean, my students specifically, we've never had a concern or they've never been students who felt like they need to belong or that they didn't. They've never really thought about that, so this type of, these type of questions, to me, kind of plants that seed for those students, be like, oh, ooh, maybe I don't fit in. You know, it just kind of plants that seed for them and I didn't, that was the only thing I didn't like with the panorama. In addition to having to opt-out instead of choosing consciously to opt-in.
But it really is opt-in, I mean.
Right, right, and that's why I like this one better.
No, I mean, it really is opt-in, because if you don't respond, you're in.
You're in.
So, so it really is opt-out, it's just different, it's just different than panorama.
But the, the difference, because again, your policy and the process following is spelled out specifically in Indiana Code, this is how you do it now. I, I say, I would actually describe it as opt-out, being totally honest. However, parents, there, there's so many ways that parents are going to be given multiple reminders along the way to make sure they fully understand everything going on, can see everything, like it ensures total, total whatever. And parents always have the ability, you heard them say a second ago, that even if, oh, I forgot to do it, all you gotta do is let them know and they're, they're going to change your, they're going to flip it anyway.
Right, yes, and they will check, I mean, you're right, they will check yes or no, basically.
Right.
So they will get that feeling of no.
So it's not actually an opt-in?
I, I would describe it more clearly as opt-out, I think, and I think that's really what, if you were going to label it strictly as that. But the difference is, again, if you read, if you read your board policy, again, I don't want to pull your policy right now, but what they're doing exactly follows that because it's straight out Indiana Code.
It's after decline.
Which is, which is, we, they will notify parents, you have so much time, we notify parents again, give them another opportunity. And then if the parents still choose not to respond, then it's assumed that you're, you've given consent, your child will be able to participate, but you can still remove them at any time.
And, and you're going to have our notes too, and then we list Indiana Code in our notes, so when you get this presentation.
Okay, I, I don't know how I got that impression then, I had the impression that it was opt-in, if you don't respond, then you're not taking it.
And I think, and I think the challenge, challenge and why I think even the legislature recognizes that that's not always the best way to go is because a lot of folks don't have an issue and just won't, they just won't respond. And then they're like, well, how come my kid didn't get to participate in this? Because this applies to a lot of things.
Right.
If you read your full policy, if you want to review it all again, so, yep.
There will be a give consent or decline consent, so maybe that's what you were thinking too, it's not only, if I felt this out, it means opt-out. So it's, yeah.
But if they don't respond, if they don't check either, then what happens?
They're in.
They're in, but that's after 31 plus calendar days.
And two notifications.
At least two or probably, I mean, knowing how we communicate more.
Yeah, because it'll probably live, I would think, in some of the newsletters of principals. We may only do, you know, the, the standard from the district, but they may let it live in their newsletter.
And that'll be a great point of feedback and, you know, grow, depending on how that goes for us.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Right.
Okay, well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you both.
Someone presenting.
Um, you need. Okay.
Oh, thanks.
Next, next.
I don't think we actually need this for the rest of these, because the rest are just discussion.
The district policy for like you said, opting in, opting out.
Thank you. C225.
C225 is board policy.
Yep, it's the same, same process, same timeline, same options, same things, so we notify parents, give them time, notify again.
And they opt-in.
Yep, all right, next up, we have school board meeting recognition.
Okay, so board, I want to start just an initial conversation, fully expecting that, not, not necessarily looking for decisions today, but as we've, as we've kind of reflected, you know, I've been here three and a half years now, we've kind of, a few months ago, maybe it was me and Marnie, me and Marnie, Karen, I don't know, some combination of us, we're kind of reflecting on how board meetings are going, how recognitions go at the start of each meeting, and thought, you know, we haven't really, I've never talked about this with the board. I don't know what happened before I got here, but feeling like maybe we should have a, just a quick check-in on how it's going, if there's things you like about it, if there's things you want to change about it. Just make sure, because as, as we talk about a lot, board meetings are truly boards, the board's meetings, we are kind of like your guests and just there to bring things that you want to see at the meeting or that you have interest or things that we need to make recommendations on. And so to kind of give you a little bit into what we were talking about that day, we started just wondering, you know, are, is there ever, is there ever time we should talk about what would be like an appropriate threshold for a student achievement or something that would say, okay, that is something that definitely should come to the board versus, well, that is a great accomplishment, but maybe to, to preserve the fact that it should feel very special, we do want to have some sort of a, I, I, threshold, probably I guess the, the best way to describe that, right? And so, you know, because over, over time, I think if you don't kind of have a clearly defined set of, of guidance for that, it can just turn into every group comes to the board, and if that's what the board wants, that's great. But that also then just makes sure we're meeting fairly long, first of all, but also i- in a way, it almost diminishes if that, if the intent was to truly recognize some sort of special achievement or outstanding achievement or whatnot. So I invited, since, since a lot of times, a lot of recognitions do come from the high school, I thought it'd be very appropriate to have Leah and Janay join us for this conversation, just so if nothing else, they can listen, but also share input on that. And at the end of the day, my mutation is, we want to do exactly what the board wants to do, but the, but just feel like it's a good time just to kind of check in and, and I'm thinking if there are any adjustments, this would probably be for next year, because we're already halfway through the year already and we don't want to change midstream. But if there's anything that you, you feel strongly about or any feedback you want us to have, so we can make sure we're doing what, what you'd like to see at the meetings, we'd love to hear it.
Well, and just to piggyback on that, we, we do have criteria that we use for your recognitions currently. We have thresholds, we have criteria, we're always talking, you know, talking about whether we should be revisiting those. Should we, you know, are you happy with kind of what the thresholds look like now and the people that come? There's a lot of, sometimes there's a lot of repetition of groups, sometimes there's been, you know, a question as, as the district has grown and become more accomplished, that some of the things that maybe used to be 10 years ago a really big deal are like not a big deal because that happens every single year. So, you know, and maybe that's okay, or maybe you want to, you know, raise the bar. So, you know, so we do have some parameters that we use to, you know, bring things to you currently, but I think the question is, are you happy with those parameters? Would you like to see them changed in any way?
And last thing, and we'll shut up a little before talk, just as I think there's just some examples, like sometimes it feels like a team or a group may become and they don't necessarily have an achievement, but they're almost just more organized and like, well, you're the seniors that are on this team or whatever. And there is nothing wrong with that, but to me, we also want to make sure we're being very consistent. So no teams or things feel like certain things are getting recognition that they're not, because if the expectation is that seniors from every club and activity get recognized, that's obviously going to be a very different approach, a very big approach if we were to do that, and I'm not recommending that in any way. But, you know, just, we, we want to make sure we're being very fair and consistent to all, all of our students who work really hard.
We have received questions sometimes about, you know, one of the, one of the things that we recognize currently as individual kind of academic All-State and honorable mention All-State, academic All-State, you know, athletes, but sometimes that brings athletes to the board meeting that, you know, maybe their team did not have a successful winning season. And so there's kind of a question about why is this person, you know, why is this athlete being invited? Well, they're being invited really more because of their kind of academic.
Different achievement.
Different achievements, but then, you know, but then we're not really recognizing other types of academic achievements that might be equal. So just, you know, that, that type of, you know, thinking about through that lens of just, you know, across the whole district, like, you know, we, we struggle sometimes to bring, you know, younger student accomplishments, right? Like the large majority of things that you see are from the high school. We, we have a couple of things throughout the year where we bring, you know, elementary students for like their holiday card art, for example. Or I think actually next month, you're going to see some middle school teams who won kind of their county championships, because that's sort of the bar we put for them, is that at middle school level, a county championship is like a state championship at high school level. So, so anyway, just as you think about, reflect on that, those are some other things to consider.
I think it would be good if the coaches were more consistent on kind of what they said or how they introduce the students. I mean, some of them are obviously more comfortable talking and some of them aren't. Some of them talk for a really long ti, I mean, there's one that talks a really long time.
We know.
And then, so I think that, that could be a little more consistent for me.
We do have some instructions that we give all the board meeting presenters about how long they're supposed to take, what types of things we're supposed to highlight, how to like bring people up and, and then, you know, that some of the people who are more well-versed in that and do it regularly kind of know that drill and then some people who are new.
And some of us are rule followers and some of us are.
May or may not follow the rules.
Let's just be honest.
Yes. Well, I think as far as the senior recognitions go, I think they pretty well do that within their own school or club on their own. So just, you know, recognizing seniors for being seniors, I don't think is necessary to be here.
Yep.
But like their special accomplishments, you know, academic all-star, you know, that kind of thing, I think that's great to have. But I, I think as far as recognizing others who don't, who probably normally wouldn't see a spotlight, is there some way we could gauge? Like, I don't know, maybe standardized test, standardized testing, they have the most improved in their building or in their grade. Because some of those students are never going to be here if it's based on sports. And they're never going to be recognized for things like that.
Right, and, and the arts are good, the arts are good about, you know?
Right, right. Um, but too. We do bring like the National Medal finalists, you know? But yeah. Students whose art gets chosen for the city building and. Right, yeah. Journalism is a good example of, you know, we, our journalism program is just so accomplished that those, you know, those kids on our.
They're here all the time.
They're here every year, that's just sort of a given that they want, you know? And so I guess just, you know, philosophically, you know, do you, are you okay with that? Or would you want to say like, I'd rather, you know, have the, set the bar higher and have this be something that's, that, you know, they only reach occasionally, you know, versus something that's just sort of become a standard.
I guess that without knowing the standards, it's hard for me to assess, like without knowing the criteria, I don't know what the criteria is.
I was just actually thinking that, that, like, you know, I'm sitting here thinking, we're just hard, maybe we're going to send that out. And we can send that out, like I said, to me, this is an initial, just plant the seed and start thinking about it.
Yeah, and I can share, I mean, I, I have, I can share some of that verbally. So for, at the high school level, for athletics, we have, and this, again, this is something that Leah and I just kind of hashed out and Karen in the, in the old days, recognition of conference, sectional, regional, semi-state and state championship teams in addition to All-State and academic All-State and honorable mention All-State and academic All-State. Recognize any team who qualifies for the state championship regardless of what place they finish. Recognize any cross-country golf or tennis team who qualifies for state, even if they may not have won the sectional, regional or semi-state since it is based on a point total. And again, for athletics at the middle school, it's a county or conference win at that level. We have, you know, for music, All-State individual and state honor bands, solo ensemble, you know, spring, winter, spring music recognition, invite sectional leaders or seniors to represent. So s- some of this is just, you know, back, again, back like, you know, 10 years ago when we developed some of this, it was more rare. Now, like our, you know, we, our, we get ISMA, All-State, you know, like gold, whatever, you know, like every single, every single time, you know, so. Uh, which is amazing and you, you guys might want to say, hey, we're really proud of that, it's amazing, we want to celebrate that every, every single time. Or we might say, let's raise the bar a little higher and make it even, you know, maybe it has to be a bigger accomplishment to come to the school board and be recognized.
I like honoring more than less.
I, I, 100%.
Okay, right.
You know, I don't have trouble starting an extra 15 minutes, so if somebody can tell me they did this, that or the other.
Okay, absolutely.
I, I just think, this is always good, okay? So for me, we don't have to go less, I mean, just so you know.
I totally agree with you, yeah. I mean, I think, I mean, you know, you would hate to be in that class that, oh, I get to go to the school board meeting because I got gold at ISMA. Oh, they changed it, now I don't get to go, I mean, yeah, I think you need to.
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
Think more.
Okay, well, and I, we do the, like the teacher recognitions every month too, under the HARE spotlight. Is that restricted to just teachers? Can we do like the IAs? Can we do food service? Can we do custodial? Does it have to be teachers?
We've, we've done some of that with, when they win an honor of some sort, like when the, when the food service people. So the HARE teacher award, I believe is tied to something.
The HARE program is specifically for educators because that's what HARE told us they wanted to do when we built that program. But we do have the, our Miller of the Year awards that recognize classified staff. And that's something we could, we don't currently bring those in to be recognized at board, but we could.
What about in middle school, and my kids obviously are older now, but in middle school, when you get like student of the month? Do they still do that where you, where teacher, where they do student of the month?
Yeah.
I mean, why have we not, what's the thought of bringing in? Because it doesn't seem like we have a lot of middle schoolers that confident.
Yeah, I will say, at the time, my moment, my kid got student of the month from his P E teacher.
So he would have been here.
But they do have their own program at the school.
Right, right.
He was so excited.
Yeah, yeah, I'd have to, I'd have to talk to the middle school principals. I mean, at one time, there were like a lot of kids that.
Yeah, I don't know, I'm just.
But we can.
I'm just trying to think of a way to find.
If there are like 100 kids in that every month, that might be.
That might be a lot.
So we might need to look. So we might need to look.
Do you have principals reaching out to you saying, or like maybe? Uh Leah saying, we would like, can we recognize these individuals or have suggestions for like, this is a really cool thing, but? That, that we'd like to recognize, or are they giving feedback?
Yeah, occasionally, but most of the times it, it already kind of falls within our.
Okay.
And actually, I found, I did have more detail in the music, okay, if you're interested, I do have more specific detail that I found here that we had, um, of kind of what qualifies the music recognition, but. Um, but you know, occasionally somebody will bring something up, and I just, I, you know, I usually make kind of a judgment call of whether it kind of falls in line with this other stuff, and. We usually err on the side of including them, I don't, like, to your point, I don't know that we. Very, I mean, like, for example, you may not remember this, but a couple of years ago, you recognized like uh the hockey team. The hockey team is not like a school team, and in fact, the hockey team's not even on Noblesville School's kids, there's like four kids, four or five Noblesville kids that run this hockey team, but they won like their, kind of their state championship or something, and they. Had reached out to me, and I was like, I said, sure, let's recognize these four or five Noblesville High School kids for their. State championship accomplishment, even though it was outside of our normal, you know, school sport, so we, so we recognize that, you know? Um, like some of the life-saving, like the life-saving employee things, we just kind of took the initiative and said, that's really cool, that's really cool that you did that, let's have the board recognize you. Um, so some of that is just kind of like, we just kind of, you know.
Right. What are your thoughts on it, like, what, do you think we do, like, do, do you think we do too much, too little, more, like, do, do you think it needs revamped?
I've. Um, I, I mean, I think there are pros and cons to that, I mean, I, one of, I mean, to Joe's point earlier, that I think this is like a great way to connect with the community, I mean, a lot of the community members. Don't ever come to a board meeting, except when they have this, um, honestly, it, it feels, it's a, feels good, it helps. Um, make parents remember all of the, you know, spe- special accomplishments that we're doing, nobody ever, and nobody ever complains that they're being too loved on.
Right, that's true.
So, I don't, so, you know, so there's that, but then on the other hand, sometimes it can, and maybe this is just more of me looking through it, the lens of the. You know, Karen and I being kind of the ones to administer this, sometimes it does feel very repetitive, like, oh, like, we're seeing like the same kids again, or the same thing, and the same. Group, you know, a couple of months later, and um, it almost feels like, I mean, does, you know, I do kind of question like, is this, does this? Carry the same sort of prestige or specialness that, that it used to, um, if it's just sort of a expected every single year that it's like the same thing? So I, you know, you can see, I can see it both ways.
I don't think we can do away with it, I mean, I don't, I don't think you lessen it. Um, what about like if our school is our spotlight school, like our next school is what, um, Noble Crossing, right? What it, what about? Um, having the principal, like, like to, um, Missy's point about having great teachers, what about if the teachers or? The admins say, we want to recognize a couple of special students at that building? Not necessarily students that get recognized all the time, not the athletes, not the, the band, you know, not the band people, but students that maybe. Have done something unique or special.
So maybe as part of the building spotlight, in addition.
Right.
Yes, I like that.
Please feature a few students who made a.
This student did a, like, we have one student that's a.
For something that you're proud of with them, honestly, you could leave.
Yes.
Right.
Well, I, I think that's a fun idea, they could even, if they want it, they could even tie it into the theme of whatever they're talking about.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Thinking, maybe tie it in, so then they don't feel isolated. They could have a couple of kids come in, like, these kids like have a huge increase in their math.
Right, right.
Recently.
And they're going to help us tonight with our presentation.
Or we have the young man, we have the young man last year that did a food drive. Remember, I mean, stuff like that is just amazing.
That was a good example of one that we just kind of like, yes.
But it, but it, to put it kind of back on each building, I don't.
And then the little girl that came in recently, Sydney, I think was her name. Um, she had come in, was it Stony, Stony Creek?
I know where you're thinking of.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think it would just be nice to recognize. Students that don't get recognized all the time.
Right.
Another interesting, and you were getting ready to say something, I'm going to let you talk.
You do, you, with this group, you just gotta talk.
You just gotta jump in.
You just, yeah.
One way we could do that, I'm curious, and this would be cool, is at, before, while the audience is sitting out here waiting for us to come out, if there could be like a slideshow that just has a picture of a kid and like. What their special achievement was, like. Maybe that they're not here, standing up at the front, and we're talking about them, but like a slideshow of like, say, we're doing Hazel Dell, so then there's like five kids that are just up on the screen that their picture rotates and. Talks about, maybe says a little blurb at the bottom about what they've accomplished. I don't know.
I think, I think the maximum, I think the maximum return on this idea though, is that they get to come and the parents get to be here and see their kid, talk to you, shake your hand and get a picture.
So can, in all candor, I'm not, in all candor, Karen and I also are pretty, you know, are pretty high, you know, have a. We're at probably at capacity in terms of some of the logistical things that they are doing together, stuff, creating like gathering pictures and creating a little slideshow and stuff, it's probably like. Would, would, would be taken away from something else that we're working on.
Yeah, yeah, that makes sense.
At peanut gallery, I'm, I'm always worried about the parent involvement or the high school kids, like, are they like, I'm too busy?
That's what I wonder.
It, it feels to me like Thanksgiving dinner, it takes four hours to prep and eat in ten minutes.
Yeah.
And it's a lot to get over here, that's not saying we can't do it, I just want to be cognizant of their time, but then.
I heard.
I mean, I talk about that, usually it's like, the parents love it.
The parents love it, so, yeah, yeah.
That's okay.
Yeah, and if it doesn't work for them, then they'll just have to decline the invitation, yeah, and we've talked about that, for the years that.
I, I, I also think that it might be nice at some point for the board, a few minutes before the meeting starts. And not that we're going to talk about anything that we're, we're talking about in the meeting, but for us to go and, and see the students and the parents that were here. And say congratulations to them, because we shake their hands up there, but then they, of course, all leave. So it, it might be nice to actually, we did that when we did your um pizza with.
Oh, yeah.
With your, I don't know, I mean, does it make more sense for us to, I don't know? What do you guys think?
That worked out really well, I remember doing that, and, and you actually got to talk to people, and they really enjoyed it, they appreciated.
What I, well, maybe what you could do is you could just say. If you and your student are available, if you would like to show up at five forty-five.
Mm-hmm.
The board would like a chance to say hello to you before the meeting starts, and that's not necessarily any extra work, it would just be when they're invited to the meeting, just hey, come a few minutes early. And the board would like to meet you and say hello.
In the, in the back?
Well, because they're coming.
Up here, we would just come out earlier.
They're not all going to fit in the back.
Yeah, we would just come out here, see her.
So it could be out here, or in the entryway, or if it's a tiny group, they could come back to you.
Right, I don't know, I don't know, well, sometimes, it just doesn't seem personal to me.
Yeah, and I think that's also important to consider the size of the group, because some, you know, sometimes it could be a couple of people, but sometimes it can be like hundreds of kids, so, yeah. Um, and that's actually another thing I wanted to get your feedback on too, and Leah and I and Karen have worked over the years, um, and Eric Thornberry, to try to. Streamline, like how many people are here at one time, um, and so we have, you know, worked on like, hey, we'll recognize fall sports this month, winter sports this month, spring sports this month, um, you know. And then we try to do music at the months kind of in between, and we're obviously trying to work it with their, with all of their schedules and things, um, so that we don't have. You know, big swings or things, but that's sometimes challenging, because um, particularly with like athletic schedules, so sometimes that pushes things where we're recognizing some spring sport in July, all the spring sports in July, and then it's like not real timely, or. Um, you know, um, you know, kids have, you know, graduated, you know, and, and so, um, you know, there's. Some thoughts to like, how important is that to you, like, you know, um, I think it's probably. Can be, like, if we went back to a model, we used to have a model where e- each sport would just come like every month, and then there'd be athletics every single month, you know?
Yeah, so, so part of the challenge for us, and Karen and I were talking about this before, part of the challenge for us is like, so. Cross country just got done Saturday. Football is done, but their awards won't come out until well after Thanksgiving. And there's a lot of reasons why, like, as a conference, we do that, because we don't want parents to say, we don't want to interrupt. Teams' success as they go forward, because the parents upset their kid didn't get all conference, or they made second team all conference and not first team all conference, so we don't want to. We don't want to interrupt their seasons, because what they're doing now is more important than the, the award they're going to get later.
Yeah.
So, so now we have all these, like, girls golf has been done for three weeks now. And that's one of the teams that we would recognize, because they were runner-up. So I'm wondering, uh, you know, and with our, all of our fall sports now are moved on to their winter sports, even in, if we do November board meeting. All of our sp- fall sport athletes have either gone to their clubs, or now they're playing their winter sports, so it becomes difficult to get them.
Yeah.
At a board meeting, um, so that's part of our challenge, and, and I'm just thinking out loud, could we break it up? You know, to your point, or I think somebody said, you know, a, a team that didn't do very well, here you're listening to how well. You know, boys cross country did, and, and girls golf, which is great, and we still had a lot of great performers on all of our different teams. Um, but it, it seems kind of, I don't know the word I'm looking for, but if I'm a student athlete back there, and then, okay, well, I was all state, but. These teams won, I don't know if that makes sense or not.
So you're saying break it up more, instead of.
Maybe break it up, make it up, and do like, okay, let's do uh, boys cross country and girls golf, because they were both state runner-up, let's do them at the same time, and then maybe try to do the individuals. At a different time, I don't know if it's all sport individuals, or if it's.
Well, that was my question, would that mean that individuals have to come twice, so I'm all state on the golf team, now you've got to come into one meeting and then another meeting?
Or you could, I mean, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so there's just a different logistics.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
I do too, I think breaking it up is fine, I don't know that we just have to.
However you guys want to do that, I feel like you guys do whatever is easiest for you, like, if this is a, you guys work, I feel like you guys should.
I guess the other question is too, and I can absolutely try to, I mean, like Marnie said, we do, I send out to my coaches.
Mm-hmm.
At least four or five times, what the, the, the information that Marnie, yeah, instructions that men, as Dan said, some follow rules better, better than others, and. And myself and Rich, who would represent the athletic department, we're now into other sports as well, and as we get further in, it's really difficult for us. To be able to attend a board meeting, which would probably be more ideal, because then, he or I could just.
Monitor.
Monitor, well, we could just present and we could.
But they could be the speaker.
We could be the speaker, and it wouldn't have to be a coach.
Ah, there you go.
Yeah, so.
That would be ideal.
Yeah, so, um, I mean, we would want the coach to be here if they could.
Right.
But.
It's also fun to hear what the coach has to say about difference, because sometimes it's fun, sometimes it's like, oh.
Context, yeah.
Well, I think ti- I think timeliness, you know, would be good too, because there was an, um, I think it was the, one of the soccer teams that won state, I was. Really like frustrated that I was happy, this, the city of Noblesville recognized them, and I, I love that the city was recognizing them, but that part wasn't frustrating, but I was frustrated because the. City recognized them before we recognized them, um, and I felt like kind of, like they scooped us, you know, like, but these are our own kids and our own award, and we had, we hadn't gotten to, because, because of our. You know, system of, you know, that the city was just more nimble and just jumped on and said, hey, come in in two weeks and we're going to recognize you, where we were like trying to.
Yeah.
Put it with all this other stuff, so, um.
Oh, so like, they did it as just a side thing, or was it a council meeting?
It was at a council meeting, but I mean, they, their council recognized like our, one of our state championship teams before you guys did, and that.
Because.
Because.
We've been waiting so they're all done.
Yeah, we were waiting till everybody was done, and we were waiting for all the other things scheduled.
I think that the, the schedule just needs to be fluid and just.
I don't agree.
How that sorts out, you guys can do that.
I agree.
Like, yeah, that's something Leon, Karen, I can work on.
I mean, I think you just do them as soon as they're ready to come, I mean, based on like, what you're saying.
Girls golf like.
Last board.
I mean, I would be fine with that, yeah.
Yeah, I think actually.
You don't have to do all the fall sports, is that what you're saying, we do all the fall sports?
Part of that, yeah, just to try to manage the flow of, you know, of how many kids are, I mean, I don't know if you guys remember, we had a board meeting, like, ah, still traumatized by it, it was like. I like, maybe two years ago or something, where we had, we had two hundred and fifty kids here at the same night, and I felt like I was directing a parade or something, I was out like. Literally, we had people st- um, outstaged outside, and, you know, I, all I needed was like a megaphone to, I mean, it was like.
Here that we have boys cross, uh, boys soccer, girls soccer, girls cross country all on stage, and the van.
Van, I think it would be better to buy it up.
That is a damn good one.
Yeah, but sometimes not, but sometimes packaging it actually helps with that, so that we don't just, because otherwise, we ran, like randomly have a bunch of stuff in May, that just all happened in May.
And then we might have a meeting where there's none.
Right, and, right, I think it, it, when it's more timely, I think it's more.
Yes, but that's helpful.
It's more important to the student and the parent, if it's, if it's timely, right? And if you're the only team being recognized, it's kind of more special than all the teams.
Yes, yeah, I think it just needs to, you know, be very fluid, and just kind of even last minute, throw it on the schedule, if they, you know, like with football, they just finished, but their season could have been extended. So they wouldn't have been ready if they were still in it.
Yeah, it wouldn't have.
So, but right, if it comes to an end, throw them on the calendar for next week, you know?
Well, you have to give them s- parents notice and, yeah.
Just figuratively speaking, just as an example, to show that, you know, just be fluid with it, and.
Yeah, and we can talk about that some more, but I know that's a pain point that Karen often struggles with, is just trying to get. You know, trying to get the names, who are all these kids, and have we got, got them all invited, has she got certificates made for all of them, and you know, so there, there is a lot of stuff that goes on behind the scenes. Yeah, who will do, is the coach showing up or not, you know?
And we do have some teams where there's only like two representatives of like an entire team.
Yeah, out of thirty kids.
But if you do it later, and they've already, if they're a two-sport athlete, and they've already moved to another sport, a lot of times they have practiced.
That's hard.
Most of them are for their next app, whatever, they're all playing something else.
So, yeah, so there are pros and cons, and we've, you know, we've kind of tweaked this in different directions over the years, trying to find the perfect answer, I don't know that there's a perfect answer, there's. But this is help, this has been helpful for me to just hear your feedback about, so some of the, kind of the key. Takeaways that I heard, um, is that you'd rather do more kids than less, um, like the idea of recognizing special students at a building as part of the student spotlight. Um, you know, maybe um, research the idea of the student of the month at the middle schools, um, Miller of the Year, classified staff. Um, find, you know, as, as part of that, finding opportunities to recognize students who are not typically recognized. Um, fact that you might want to congratulate students when they arrive before the meeting, um, and that you're open to. Kind of breaking things up and having them be more timely and spread out to that, that kind of summary.
Yes, but I don't know if that helps the issue at hand here, which is, there's a lot of work, you know what I mean, so like, if we need to work.
It's going to be work regardless.
Yeah.
I, I think a big part of this as well, I tried to say at the beginning, which is, we just want to make sure. You're enjoying, or you're feeling like it's being what you're hoping to get out of it, like, the parents love it, the parents are glad, we want them to love it, and there's a, you. There's a lot of value for the district, making families engage with us whenever possible, so, it's not that, it's just, it is a lot of work, I want to make sure that the board.
Yeah.
Likes the way it's going, and hasn't been like, geez, why they getting all these things through here, well.
And our board meetings are efficient and effective, and we get through that pretty quick.
Sure.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, but it breaks parrots into, I like that.
Who, what are, what are your thoughts on, um, I, I know you mentioned, you know, the Miller certified staff, Miller of the Year, but. In the building spotlight, if they're selecting an additional student or two from the building for the spotlight that month, what about another anon teacher employee?
We can ask that, but I'll be uh, recognizing that we're on the record here, hopefully nobody will take offense to this, but I'll just, I'm just going to be candid with you, that. Some staff feel very loved and respected to come to a board meeting, be recognized by you, and some staff feel like this is a. Uh, chore, that they now have to come to something at six o'clock at night.
I see, I think that's the way for athletes too.
So, so I, I think suggesting to the principals, like, if you want to bring staff and want to recognize some, and you have people, like, we could certainly suggest that, but I wouldn't want to put something where they like had to do that. Uh, which is kind of why the hair, which is why the hair thing's always been optional, and most, I feel like most teachers do come and do enjoy that.
I think most teachers come, I mean, very rarely do.
But not all of them come, and, and that's why, because we don't want it to be like a, hey, we, you know, yay, we're rewarding you, and now you got to come to a, a meeting in the evening, like some, right.
Yeah, there is one other thing that I would like to say, and I know it's going to be a lot of work.
Yes.
But I'm going to say it, when we honor the um, art in our December board meeting, it would, and I know it's in the hall, but it would be really nice to have the art. I know it's a lot of work.
Yeah, to have a slide showing it.
To have a slide that says, you know, this is.
We don't always see their art.
We don't, we don't, I know it's, or have them hold the picture, I mean, have them hold it.
Hold their art.
Hold their art, or something, you know, it's, instead of already having it in the hallway, have them walk up and hold it.
Bring their little chicken.
Hold their art.
Although, although the parents love seeing it mounted on the wall, and they love taking pictures with their kids with the art, so.
By taking a picture of their kid holding the art.
And then take it, take off the wall, bring it in, or just nail it to the wall.
Yes. That would be easier to do, yes.
It, it just, it's, it's just really, it's one of my favorite recognitions, because there's all ages.
Yes.
And there are kids that usually don't get recognized, but, but you don't really know, you know, and if we walked out after our meetings. After our meeting, we wouldn't know who was who necessarily.
I like that suggestion.
I think, if we can get photos of everything before it gets framed, just get a glare on the glass, so take the photo before we frame it.
Uh-huh.
And then go ahead and frame it, have it on the wall, because the parents like to get a picture of the kids standing next to it, and everything like that, but then we can incorporate that into them.
Yeah, well, just behind the scenes, sometimes those things are literally framed like hours before your board meeting. Because again, that's a huge undertaking, too, it's like the art, get it out here, so it's a, um, you know, so, yeah, so that would be a good idea to do it beforehand.
Same with the holiday card too.
Yes.
For genetic, but that's just one.
That's just one, yeah.
Yes. Okay, well, this is.
What do you think, Janay? You've been quiet.
I mean, I don't really have strong feelings about it, I want to see what you guys want, and then I obviously have a chance to offer an athlete card and other things.
Right.
I think, you know, certified staff, um, it is honored, it's recognized. I think, you know, certified staff, um, it is honored, it is recognition, but our certified staff and customers, so more awful jobs. Um, enjoy every, you know.
Yeah. I think really my overall, yeah, my overall goal, I guess, is just to maybe capture and make those employees feel important that otherwise might not feel important. Like, you know, so and so always gets the recognition or it's always this group of employees. It's never us. I mean, I haven't heard that.
Yeah.
So I just.
Well, that's some of what, and, and that's some of what we've tried to do over the years by even bringing employees to you in the first place. Cause I think this work, this was just for students, but the fact that we started, you know, we've started bringing teachers to here, we started bringing the, um, you know.
Yes, yes.
You know, that, but I like that we already do those awards. That would be very easy to invite those folks. Um, and that's nice because it does hit all the different staff groups, so.
Bring the award winners.
Yeah, so by doing that throughout the course of one school year, you'll have, you know, honored uh somebody from all of the different employee groups. So I think that's a, a good suggestion. It'd be easy to do.
I, it's good because I didn't really know. I had a parent reach out to me to ask if their eighth grade volleyball student last year was, their team was going to be recognized because they had won, is it county? Is that what you said?
Mm-hmm.
And I was like, oh no, I don't think we recognize middle schoolers. I think we just recognize high school. So I didn't even know. And then I got a email back that like, oh no, you guys are going to be recognizing because they won. And I was like, oh, and that parent was really excited. Now I know that, then I just think there are high school parents, like maybe a football player, but they're like, oh, we're not gonna, we're not gonna go to that. You know, like it's not a big deal, but I think some parents really care and I think some maybe, so I don't, I don't know what you do to.
Yeah, but we do have, we do have the, you know, and like I said, even I found the list here for music too, that we do have like winter percussion, if they made state or national finals, jazz band, if they qualified for jazz state finals, you know, Goldwood distinction, a state solo ensemble.
That might be a lot.
Wire, you know, doing a show fire, you know, state final, so.
That might be too many.
We have, we have, there's a lot here.
Break those out.
And those are, you know, yeah, marching millers qualify for state, um, qualifying for national finals, individual recognition for state honor bands. That's like another one where like, we have lots of kids that, that's just sort of almost the norm now because our music programs are so high achieving that.
Well, and that's the thing too. I mean, our groups do, they are so high achieving that it's a regular thing. It's, it's the norm.
Yeah.
What about theater, drama, journalism?
Yeah.
Seems like we have a lot of those, like a lot of theater.
Again, they're just high, you know, we have high achieving groups. The theater, like every year they win like a state recognition. Every year our yearbook wins, every year the um, you know, state, uh, the Miller media, you know, or the
Your students.
Millstream kids and the broadcast kids, they all, they win, you know, state journalism awards. They're just, and so that's, that's one of those ones that's just like kind of on autopilot. Like those kids are always invited, they always win.
And they come.
And they come.
Which is to show that we have a good program and we have great students in the program.
And they don't probably get recognition like some maybe athletes would, you know what I mean? Like it's not as well known. They're competing in these things as much as.
Well, and I try to, you know, because we have a whole other communication channel that does all of that athletic communications, I, I, you know, if you ever notice that, my communications lead more heavily to all the other stuff. I do talk about athletic stuff. It's like a state championship level, but otherwise I kind of let the athletic communication channels take the lead on that. And I've tried to talk about the journalism students and academic stuff and the music programs and all that.
Which I feel like we do a great job of. I mean, I don't, I feel like they get recognized, yeah.
I, I will say real quick too, I've had situations where for one reason or another, like I'll, I'll get lists of names to create the certificates and I'll just copy paste over. There might be a spelling errors and, and I will have parents or students contact and they want that corrected. They want that certificate to rise. So they.
So they love the.
They love the certificate and they do actually usually put them out at like their open.
At their grad parties.
We did, I have them scrap up for my kids.
Yeah. Yeah, and we see them and some kids have like twenty of them, but they're proud of them. Yeah, it's cool. It's a, cool. Okay, well, good.
We appreciate you guys doing those certificates and.
But we do.
It's a lot of work.
Yeah, there's a lot of, um, well, thank you for saying that. And really even, you know, Leah and Eric Thornbury and the coaches and like there, there is a lot of logistical work behind the scenes that goes into kind of like, I loved her announcement about Thanksgiving dinner. It feels very much like that. We spent hours shopping and cooking and plating and then, and then the whole thing, you know, goes like quickly, but um, but I, I agree that it's a, a great touch point with our community and positively, it gives them a great opportunity to come to a board meeting and I'm glad that you guys enjoy it that.
We did.
So now we need to talk about um reordering our agenda so that when we have the captive audience.
We're not gonna punish them.
No, we're not.
To, to Christie's point about parents are gone, I thought, well, you could always put them at the end.
Right.
You could stop throughout the meeting, but.
I do think that's a question too.
Yes.
They have other, yes.
Yeah, I think you'd lose a lot of people.
Anybody have anything else on this topic?
Yeah.
Yeah. Janay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, now we take off a few lines.
I love that sweatshirt.
David, David's been so patient.
I bought one.
Where?
Janay told me where. I'll, I'll set, on the secret.
Who's find the, I, I never.
Play chairs. I ordered it online.
Very popular.
Nice.
Who's your sister in play chairs?
Yeah, thanks.
Not who's your sister.
Not who's your sister. I, I.
I love the wide neck.
Yeah.
Cool.
I, I got one. Out cause during bargaining. All right, this is for the meeting. You wore the same pants as me last night at our meeting.
I hope people watch this live stream or are loving where to get the sweaters.
That's okay.
Thanks, Gary.
Okay. Now some serious finance.
Well, maybe. So, so just to refresh, so.
Oh, and your audience left.
So, yeah, yeah, there you go. So, Board, just really quick, I just wanted to hold the final few minutes here and then this can be as short as long as you want, although remember I do have to hear your state of school, so don't make it too long. Um, that after the, the budget, we obviously had a lot of budget presentation for the budget hearing and then at the board meeting, there were some questions and things. And so I'm just wanting to hold the space really quick. If there were any follow-up questions you've thought of over the last month or so about uh our financial, our financials um now or in the future for David. Um, just thought it'd be easier just to have more of a Q and A time if there were things that were still on your mind or things you've been wondering or wanted to get a little deeper on as you reflected on that. So that's a little, all this is, we have not prepared a presentation or anything of the sort. It's really just, if there's anything further you wanted to know or talk about, want to do it while it's still fresh in your mind.
As we move through this year, through next November, through the next year, as we go through this three years of SB one and, and all our issues. Uh, I, I think it'd be real helpful for all of us, and again, I just, I had a schedule to put together, as we've been talking a little bit about riffing and other things.
Like you're forecasting.
What's gonna happen if we don't do a referendum? I mean, I'm just planting a seed that, and I know you're probably gonna do this anyway, but so each of us have talking points as we're out here in the community beginning to try to sell the referendum in another year. So you're from today, right? I mean, you're, you're from now, okay?
You're from today.
You're from today.
Wow, you're false.
So, so I put some thought into making something that's, 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 that's like you normally do when you speak up here, it, 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 it's highly understandable for the average, everyday Joe out here that's trying to figure out money, okay? Put together something for us so we can begin over this next year, because now with the Avon thing, we're starting to get just a, I've seen a few questions arise and we'll see more. But good talking points. I mean, pretty simple, but that, that are impactful on your children, okay, her children and anybody else's children that are out here or, and/or people's grandchildren. That, that makes sense.
Yes, and that, that's probably more of me question than a David question because um here's, I understand everyone's anxious to start having those thought points to use them, but I'm gonna, I'm scared and just ask you to be still because a couple of things. One, nothing is officially happening until this body votes on it.
Yes.
And that will not happen until May or June of next year. However, as we start getting closer to that, we will start discussing and talking about some things. I would also tell you that just yesterday, David and I met with um our two elected legislators to just catch them up on how things are going and whatnot. And David has some suggestions that you shared with them as well as a couple of other um very influential members of the state house, um, for ways that we're hoping they will consider that if they were to make a few adjustments, it will actually help change both our, both the current financial outlook and also um the way the approach to a potential refer, referendum question would, would go. So I hate to get too far ahead of the, of, ahead of things until we know for sure where some of these things stand, but be that as it may, I, I do want to just tell you that um us, I'm gonna make an assumption for a moment that, that if the board does choose to ask me to consider a, a new referendum in twenty seven, at a vote, twenty six vote. I, I would exercise a lot of caution of ever giving any sort of absolute of if this, then this absolutely happens. And if this doesn't happen, this absolutely happens. And here's why. There's always variables that come into play. Um, and I don't want to say, well, here's the exact two hundred jobs that would be cut because something may change at the last minute and then things change. And I don't want anyone in any way to accuse any of us in this room or other leaders that they were misled or we weren't being honest. But I will say, I think the way that I think it's easiest to think about is what are all the extra things that we do to serve the children in Noblesville that are absolutely not required? Those are the lists that we would have to start looking at and prioritizing if we had to eliminate twenty five million dollars annually out of the budget.
So then it starts to, we really wouldn't even think about this kind of conversation till Ju- June, July?
You, like, if the board was going to, if the board uh ultimately decides to do that, that would likely come to the board in June.
Yeah.
Um, because it has to be certified and done by like the end of July and we want to.
That's where my question is reading about Avon. I mean, that's where, that's where my question, reading about what's going on at Avon.
Right, right. But obviously, again, it's no secret. I'm very open about this and I will even mention it a little bit of state of the schools today. Um, that obviously this is a very important part of our funding structure here in Noblesville. It is for a lot of districts, just like us throughout the state. This is not unique. This is not new. People should not be surprised that um we at least have to have this conversation with our community because it provides a lot of things that our community expects from Noblesville schools now. Um, and so I would say if people are thinking about, well, we should live without or do whatever, okay, but you're not going to want to give up the things that that money pays for. That's, that's just the truth.
But you're gonna have a list though of things that are currently being paid for by the referendum money.
Think, think of it this way, the way, and I don't want to put words in David's mouth, but the way we think of it is, you know, you have your three, we'll call them the operational funds, right? You've got the operations fund that every district gets for property taxes, which pays for, you know, um, a lot of classified staff and maintenance and things like that. You've got the education fund, which is the one that goes dollars per kid that come from the state budget, which pays for mostly teachers and whatnot. And then we have a third income, which is the referendum. The referendum basically just helps fill in any extras in either of those funds that we want. So then, so yes, technically David could pull a report and tell you right now, this is what we spend, but it's all, it's kind of interchangeable. Um, so the way to think of it is, it's just extra money in the pot to then do more things we want to do or have higher salaries or lower class sizes or whatever. So I just truly, the easiest way I think about it is just, just think about what, what is absolutely must, that we must provide. Those things will probably be untouchable and everything else is a potential area that will get trimmed or eliminated. That's the easiest way to say it. So if you want me to share some examples, um, one that in Noblesville that I would assume our community feels very strongly that they don't ever want to give up ever again, is the SRO program.
Yeah.
That is not required in any way by the state of Indiana and we would absolutely have to have a conversation about that because if it comes down to having, you know, high quality teachers in the classroom in the SROs, school is mission number one. We would have to have an uncomfortable discussion about some of those things. You know, social workers and counselors that we've added over time that everyone really appreciates and things are so great, those are extra things that we have added and we're able to do it because our community supports us. Some, even some academic uh programming and pathways we've added that are, are what are making us such a shining star district right now. They are extra because our community has so generously supported us to let us do it. But if we had to start scaling back some of those very opportunities, we would have to just think about what that looks like. Class sizes would absolutely come up. That's one I, I would recommend too. That's a, that's a must. That would have to happen. Um, so it's, it's just things like that. Is the district going to go bankrupt? Of course not. The district will still exist. The district's not going to go under, but it will feel, it would feel very, very different if twenty percent of our operational budget disappeared.
So we will kind of, you, you'll kind of, you guys kind of set us up for, for key talking points as you're less, as, as we know how things work.
We, we will develop that because the, the hardest part about this is going to be um just helping, helping everyone understand all this. Cause as you know, when we did the, the Dollars and Cents website, the whole idea was to educate our, our public on how money works and how we spend it and what we get. And it's the same idea, like we need to help people understand why, why do we have this need at all? And there are reasons why Noblesville has a little bigger need than some others to have a referendum in the first place. Um, what have we been doing with your money and why has this been a good investment? So you should want to keep doing it. That's the easiest way I think of it. Cause this time around, we're not sorry, I keep acting an absolutes. Assuming this goes forward, we are not asking for anything new. We are saying we are so proud of what we're doing and we want to keep doing it. But we need to continue having the same steady funding stream just to continue doing all the great things that we're doing right now.
Essentially not asking for an increase, but just to keep what we have.
Yes, but the trick is because of SCA one, it's probably going to look like an increase. That will be the hard part to uh help everyone understand that it's not, we're not actually asking for an increase, but on paper it may look like one because of the way SCA one has changed how taxes work.
Right.
And we don't have time to get into that today, but we will, we will talk through that if the time comes. But that, but honestly, that's part of what we're hoping. Again, we have shared some ideas that would actually help make that clearer or maybe even eliminate the need to do that. But it depends on if legislature is interested in, in working on that. Um, I'm not sure if they see it as an issue, but that was kind of my takeaway from our, if you have our conversations, so.
Is that something we can discuss in December when we meet with the legislators also?
Sure.
Like you can.
Yeah.
Give us, or they could give, provide an update or you could reiterate or like.
And honestly, we could check in on some of the ideas we shared. Brazil had a few ways to digest what we talked about yesterday. Maybe we can say, hey, you had some time to think about that or anything you'd like to share with our board about what we're talking about. That's a great idea, actually.
But during their special session, I thought they were talking about remapping or whatever, but I think they're also talking about some things about SCA one, but I think they said that it was really just more.
I think that's something I do with federal taxes. I don't think that's related.
Yeah, so they won't really look at anything like this. It's more to align it with federal. Yeah.
Yeah, cause most of the budgets for next year are set. So if they were to do something and want to really impact.
Till the next year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
Cause, cause today there's a lot of schools going out for referendums. And some of them I saw are new referendums.
We counted this morning. We pulled it up. There are six on the ballot today.
Uh-huh. Some are new and some are.
Yes. Some are, some are brand new. Several are just extensions or renewals.
Well, that's what I was gonna say. That's what I heard last night in Kokomo at our ISBA thing. There were a couple of smaller districts that were saying they were going to go out for a referendum for the first time because one point four million dollar loss for them from the state is a huge, huge amount of money. Yeah, so, I mean.
What, the, the interesting, the interesting thing about this for next year will be this. The referendum commerce, conversation in every community, if they choose to have it, is a very personal.
Right. It is.
Local conversation. And it truly needs to be a conversation between your school leaders and, or taxpayers in your community. Because at the end of the day, this is how I describe it to people. It is literally us asking our friends and neighbors to write us, the school corporation, a check to give us more money that comes straight to us and only us and it doesn't go anywhere else. So I feel a little extra responsibility because I need to show you that I'm doing good things with that extra money you have chosen to give me. Cause you made the choice by voting to give it to us. That's, that's the way to explain it. A lot of other things go into like a formula and they get handed back out, but this is local money that stays right here. Um, but I think, I think Board, you heard last night, just the few folks that stood up and spoke. A lot more districts are now going to have to have this conversation who have all this time maybe chosen to delay it or not have it or, or whatever. Cause they're going to be back into a corner now because of how tight everything's getting with these changes. And that's what they were saying when the one setup, stood up, said, well, I'm, we're suddenly, we're anticipating a million dollar loss, that there's no way.
They've pulled for their rainy day fund. They transferred fifteen percent.
They've done all the things and they're out of options and now.
What district was it? They said there's no way they could get one passed.
I'm not, Ivan's catches district. I don't know who that was. And, and, and there's, there's the thing. That's why I say it's a local community and you have to look at their local tax base. You need to look at their local dynamics. Certain communities, it is a harder conversation than others. I, it's hard in every community. Don't get me wrong, but it's, but there are certain factors that influence, influence it.
The other thing that was talked about last night, David, was the cost to do our audit and that um ISBA is going to be possibly like advocating for using a personal or CPA, like a not using.
Playing the district choose.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, cause it's, I didn't realize it was forty thousand dollars every couple of years to, what are your thoughts on that? Like?
I do like that perspective. If, what you're saying is that if it's in district uh control, essentially issue an RFP, which is what the way I see this go down, issue an RFP. Because uh in my prior role, that's, that's the way it was that you would issue RFP. Because that, that relationship with your auditor is um it's kind of like intimate, intimate relationship, right? Like they get into everything, like finances.
Yeah, you're, you're even your personal at home person that files your taxes, like, you know what I mean?
Right, and so it's really important to have like a good relationship with your auditor, which uh thankfully we've actually experienced a contracted auditor through Crowe, through state board of council, right? Because right, state board of council is behind on so many audits, so they had to outsource. So they, they hired Crowe and we were assigned Crowe and then uh that was the last time and then we were just reassigned them again. And so to have familiar faces, familiar names, they already know us, know our processes, know how to just communicate, like that's really helpful. So yeah, if that were to come to us to be our decision, issue an RFP, and then we can talk about the things that, you know, we just have to go. You know, we just have to go through an interview process to be able to select somebody, and then I would think probably get less than forty thousand dollars, right? Because I think.
You think it would be?
I would think so, yeah.
More affordable than that?
Yeah, yeah, because at that point in time, there would probably be a, called a checklist that State Board of Council would put out, that you just kind of check those boxes. And if you're interviewing three, they're gonna want to work, so that price is gonna get over there.
Yeah, 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 competition, right?
And we talked about last night, I think Joe, you brought it up about, make, you know, if it's local, it's kind of nice to, right? Somebody, you know, the community.
If there's someone local that is, should do it.
Right, and I'm sure that is, yeah.
So David, do you have any concerns, like, with where we are now moving forward? Like, for future planning?
The biggest concerns, and we mentioned this during the, the budget hearing, is really, in my mind, so. Everything about a budget, in my mind, is, it hinges on your revenue, right? Because your revenue is what funds your budget. And so then you look at, what are our factors going into our revenue? In our case, about two thirds comes from funding formula, and then about another thirty percent from the, or twenty-five to thirty percent from property taxes, and then the rest is miscellaneous stuff. It's kind of like, miscellaneous, kind of insignificant anyway. So then you look at, what's, what drives the funding formula? Student count.
Yep.
Well, we, we talked about what's happening with our, our student count, and, and then if you look at property taxes, we know what's going on there, and that's Senate Bill one with. A decreasing tax base. And so the, the concerns just lie, you know, really, on two main things that are outside of our control with the ADM. And our tax base, based on SCA one. So those are, and so, so what, what does that mean? Well, and we have, you know, some, there's some things we could potentially look at with, with enrollment, maybe stabilize it next year, and hey, that'd be great. We, we hope so. You know, on the, on the tax base side, you know, we're, we're looking at projections, but, but maybe with a lot more of. Like, some of these TIP developments coming online, you know, we just don't, we don't know, like, we can only project three to four percent. But maybe it is seven, eight percent of, of growth on the, on the tax base side as well. Same with home, you know, maybe home, home values assessments can continue to go up. So, you know, the, the, the trends right now would suggest, hey, decreasing, but it's almost just a year by year thing. We just have to take it year by year and, and just hope for the best.
Where in the past, you could, you could, you could really look at more than one year, right? You could look at a couple of years, right?
Yeah, it was pretty.
Yeah.
When you're growing, it's easy, I feel like, easier, you know, like when your student population is. I mean, that's difficult about different things, but as far as, as far as dollars goes, that's when you're.
Yeah, well, on, on that, you know, to remind you too, like, we talked about, like, we're in a deficit. Because, you know, the way I view it, we've experienced three years in a row of property tax reform. We also talked about SB one, but leading up to SB one this year in twenty twenty, and during the twenty twenty-five session, we went through the twenty, uh, three session and the twenty-four session. Which, if you combine the, the effects of those on our budget alone.
Yeah.
It was ten million dollars just in those two years, those legislative hits to us. Yeah, before we went to SB, and so that's why we're in a deficit, because you know what? We wanted to, we, we were, we were thinking that we could see the reforms from twenty-three only be one year, like. They said they were gonna be. So we bargained a very lucrative contract with teachers, right? And then they come the next year, and then they cap the referendum fund again. They limited our MLGQ fund again. The, the limitation on the waiver was, was gone for us. So again, you add up those three things, that was ten million dollars over two years. We're in a deficit, and now SB one hits, and we're looking at decreases in ADM and tax base. So, you know, with the deficit, like, I would say you either, you know, grow your way out or, or cut your way out. It's, it's not likely we're gonna be able to grow our way out for sure.
So one thing I was gonna just mention, Board, because Joe did ask last night, he just said the word again a second ago, the, the idea of RIFs. And just so you all know, we, we have talked with our administrators here a few different times about, we need to start thinking about if, assuming our student enrollment decline. Trend continues, we do need to also find ways to start gradually and appropriately tightening down staffing levels in the district, because that is the way it should go. The challenge, though, I think you all understand this, but this might be tough for the community to understand, is, so this year, we did see a fairly significant student drop of about two hundred kids. And, but the hard part is, it's people say, well, you should, you lost two hundred kids, so that should, you just cut the same number of teachers. Well, the trouble is, those two hundred kids didn't all come from third grade in one building, where I could just automatically cut five third grade teachers, right? It's two hundred kids spread out over hundreds of classrooms in ten different schools. So it really could only mean like a one or two student difference in each classroom, which is not enough to necessarily tip the scales of that. But being as it may, we still have to think about, okay, so how do we find ways to shore that up? Because we have to do our part also. And one thing that I think that we have to talk about a lot with our community in the next year is, make sure the community also understands. If, if, if a referendum question is put on the ballot again, it is not that the school system is just coming out with an open hand saying, we're not willing to change anything. We just want you to give us more money. The school system is actively working to shore up the budget and do what we can to trim. But always done through the lens of trying our best to do that in ways that protect the student experience and student outcomes as much as we absolutely possibly can. There, there may be some disagreement on what that means. There may, we may not always be able to do that, but that is the goal, is to not do things that are gonna take opportunities away from kids. Now again, the loss of the referendum would be a significant shift, that that would be unavoidable, but right now, we are doing some things. So we've put a kind of in on principals' minds to start thinking about, hey, in your schools, I want you to start thinking about all of your staff and all of your programming. Are there some low hanging fruit areas that we could consider if someone were to retire, or something like that, where we could morph some things? Here in this office, just so you know, Board, we've had two in the last month, and I think it's maybe a little more than that, if I go back a little further, of positions that have left. That we decided, we can just tighten the belt and live without those positions. So we've absorbed those and saved a couple hundred thousand dollars for the district. That's going on, I guess, is what, is my point, and we will talk about that next year.
It's important that we do our part.
We're keeping a list. Because you're, because exactly, honestly, the community should absolutely expect to know, but what are you doing? Not just, well, I'm not gonna do anything, I just want more money. No, that's it. They're doing our part, but at the end of the day, we can't do it all. We need to work together.
Right, right. Yes, we need to be able to show what we are doing or have done.
Right, right, right. So I just want to make sure you all know.
Yes.
We're not talking a lot about that out publicly, but it is absolutely happening. We're keeping a list. So that next year, we can say, over the last year, two years, five years, whatever, we've actually reduced three administrative positions and ten of these positions and this, that, and the way. And, and efforts to continually rebalance the budget back out. So, but, but at the end of the day, again, you all done this a while, you've been involved with school systems a long time. We also sometimes have surprise needs that come up, that we also have to be ready to add or do things at a moment's notice. So the most extreme examples are, you know. If a special needs student joins our district, and they have a certain need that is written in their IP, they must have, we must make it. There's no, there's no if about that or question. So David also has to make sure that we, he has ways to have money on hand if we have to hire something.
Like a one-on-one situation.
Exactly right, and that happens more than people realize.
And that's part of the deficit you hear about too, right?
That's exactly right.
Like, look, you have to budget in for that to happen. Yeah, we're, we're projected to draw down four million dollars, but if this doesn't happen, then that's where, you know, you're not drawing down that.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Well, and sometimes the needs of the student is far greater financially than what the state gives us for that student.
Yes, that happens again, more than people realize. Espe- especially in, in certain, certain areas, that, that's pretty common. Yeah, so.
That, that, that gives me a question, okay? I mean, just, what, what we just said. Not to worry, if we open the door, taking students in. How's that weight? I mean, can, can we not take any special needs students? How do, is, is there a way to not take the expensive students?
So it's funny you ask that, because I was talking with some other superintendents about this idea recently, and I, and I learned that actually. In, for certain programs and certain areas, there are ways to put a cap on those separate from the general.
We, we can take three third graders, and we could take.
We can absolutely do that. I actually didn't know this, but I believe for certain programs, like, let's say Applied Skills, Elementary Program. I believe there's a way to, to figure out what our maximum total number, and if we can see that, we just also, that just that program would be closed. That special ed program would be closed. I would have to do some real careful understanding of the legal, of how the legal backend works on that, but that is a very real.
Just thinking down the road, ten years for us, okay, if, if, if this two hundred keeps happening, okay, or four hundred or something.
That's just your outside district.
Outside district. Any student who lives in Noblesville Township could enroll here anytime they want.
What about student counts? Because that's two different days in the year counting here, right? Did you actually do a count? Is that what it's based on, or is that your aggregate average? Does the state use it?
It's however many kids enrolled on October one, and they do another count on February one. It always goes down in February.
We had two hundred less.
From October one, from last year's October one.
Okay, that seems like a horrible way to count students.
Well, Brett. Thank you. And here's.
No, I mean, you would never do that in business. They didn't like that.
It is literally a one-time snapshot.
Well, why don't we all say, everyone has to come to school.
Well, but it's not, it's not, it's not attendance. It's registration.
It used to be that, no, that used to be that. Years ago, when I was a teacher, that's what it was. Like, they would do stuff, incentivize kids actually physically coming to school, because if they weren't physically there, you couldn't count them either. But they got, they got rid of that a long time ago.
It's been from actual registration.
So think of it, think of it this way, every student in Indiana who receives public dollars. So they're either at a public school, a charter school, or they're using a voucher. They all have a student ID number tagged to them, which how the state just keeps track of where the money's going and where they are. So when I show you guys around to all that transfer report, that's what it's tracking. It's tracking all the student ID numbers. And so the, the, basically the way to think of it is, on October one, a kid can only be counted in one place.
Right.
So if they're on the Noblesville books, whether they're here or not that day, doesn't matter, but it's just only one place can count them. So, but that's part of why there's a lag between that and when it's certified, because there's always a few kids who just moved. And Tipton's arguing, no, 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 they already enrolled here. Well, we're saying, no, they're still on our books, so we have to clean all those up. Before it's locked for the state, and then David Horder Miller only shows up as a Noblesville student. And we are the only ones who get his money, or, or not. Sometimes we cleans up the other way. So anyway, that, that is the way it works, but the problem is, it can swing in between those count days, and it doesn't matter. We will not, they won't get counted again or updated until one of those points, so it's on a, how many months between that, four, five month cycle.
Wait, which means we don't get the money for them.
That's correct.
Right, between February and October, we could get hotter students, and we can also move.
If October one, we have ten thousand students, and on October two, three hundred kids decide to move into Noblesville, we're not getting any money for those kids until February one.
It's like the best.
And if they leave on, on January twenty, thirty-first, we got no money for them at all, because we don't get them for them on February. And the other count day to be aware of, because this one matters, and this is gonna matter a lot this year, is December one count, is when they count special ed numbers. It's a separate count.
Correct.
And that's when they determine all the extra money the districts get tied to special needs areas like autism.
Now, does that count only happen once a year?
That only happens once a year on December one, and the reason I'm mentioning that is because, I, I don't really want to get us in the weeds, but I don't know if you've heard. The state changed how the special ed and ML programs are being administered on the backend through the soft, through their software system. It's all coming into Power School now, which, whatever, but if the rollout has been atrocious, it's not working correctly. It's created a ton of stress and headaches and whatever, and the concern is we're less than a month away from December count. And as of now, we believe our data is still only eighty-two percent accurate. You can imagine why we're very concerned, because there's a lot of money hinging on that December one count, and every district in the state is dealing with this issue, so it's not an us issue. But it's one that we're gonna pay the price of if we can't, the state can't get this.
How many specialized, uh, actual classifications for students are there? Because they're faced.
Aaron and Amy can answer that for you.
Well, yeah, I mean, there's, I'm sure there's a lot, as opposed to a normal C and S.
Only one of those.
Yeah. But in MLs, it's different.
That's not special ed, that's.
Well, no, similar, a model equal student is classified differently, right?
Well, that count is.
There's a funding source to that, that's your topic.
And there's a small funding, there's a small funding source for that. It's nowhere near special ed.
Additional resources.
A very little bit.
Within special ed, there's a huge amount of.
It can, it's, it, it's a wide range. There's a very little amount for certain, um, special ed areas. Some are, are quite a bit, because they know it's likely to be a one-on-one, or very, very small.
They provided the list of the different categories at their presentation.
Yeah, I think you guys talked about that.
We did, yeah.
So anyway.
How many students do we lose in February from, from October?
There's at least fifty mid-year grads, on average. It's kind of miscellaneous, so sometimes it can be as high as like seventy. Then you, you kind of budget that in, knowing, I mean, you semi put that in your, yeah.
He knows it's coming.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So fifty grads, we have about fifty grads every year that get done and.
That's probably a pretty good guess. The interesting thing about that, a few years ago, we, we really talked to legislature a lot about, you know, this is very bizarre that you take that funding away from mid, from mid-year grads. Because it's almost like you want us to incentivize and encourage kids to do that, but why in the world would we do that when we almost get punished for it?
I actually didn't even think about that. Like a friend whose kid is, they're going to play sports.
And they, they, they had talked a lot about, that makes sense, and almost reversed it, and then they never did, and they haven't talked about it again. So one of these days, I hope they fix that, because in my brain, it literally is.
We've done a good job.
We're doing a good job if these students are ready to go and whatever, why in the world would the teach, would the district get hit? And we can't reduce, like, okay, that's a great example. Fifty people, fifty kids leave at, when a break, right? I can't cut teachers mid-year. I'm not legally allowed.
Yeah, that is a scene. That seems like a big issue.
It's there, but now we've lost funding.
Yeah.
Like a class.
And in the meantime, we may have gained new students too, that we still don't get money for.
Yeah, so, anyway, that's a legislative issue, but, yep, next thing about.
Okay, any other questions? Questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
If it's just a possibility, if you wanted to open a district, is that a year-long process, or is it something you file and can do right away, or?
That's a board decision.
Right, but I mean.
Board, you would need to change, it really should go through board policy. And, and if, if that's the board, I will just, again, I was telling somebody the other day, I've maybe done too good of a job of like trying to dissuade you guys from even thinking about it. But honestly, maybe we should at least talk about it at some point, but I just, I, I haven't, none of my concerns and things I've shared for you to think about have changed.
Yeah.
But it is something eventually we may need to decide, is it something we need to think about? Because there are lots of ways you can do it. We could, we could just talk about that this would be an elementary-only thing, and only two or three elementary schools. Only, you know, the ones that we feel like have appropriate capacity, and you could start small and just feel that out. But as I've shared, there are some considerations you just need to be prepared for. Back to the referendum conversation, I know I've shared it before, but I'm gonna say it again. A, a, a topic we don't have to talk about right now is that all of our students, if they attend here, their parents pay all the taxes with us.
Yes.
When you accept out of district students, their parents do not pay the property taxes for this community. And it is what it is. I mean, lots of districts have that setup, but it is just, it is something to be prepared. You're gonna need to acknowledge that and speak to that.
Well, no, we don't have to take everything. That, that's, that.
Well, you mostly have to take everything. There are a few little limitations we can consider.
If we could eliminate this certain thing.
But we, but we can say, by building those, well, I could say, Noble Crossing has no capacity at all, it's not open.
Yeah.
Right.
North can accommodate ten great students per grade, or whatever, and then we'd have to have a very fair, impartial way to pick. Because we don't get to choose, handpick the kids, though.
Right.
So if fifteen apply, we have to have a neutral way, that they get chosen, usually districts do a lottery or some sort of whatever.
Same way with Wayne Township, because right now, their property taxes go to HSE.
That's right.
If we took on Wayne Township, they would go to HSE.
Only the property taxes in Noblesville Township come to Noblesville schools, and that's the way.
Are we gonna make out two hundred kids? I know that's impossible to determine. Make out two hundred kids if we open the district.
Oh, oh, let's open it. Oh.
I don't know. I mean, I, I would imagine, I'm not HSE superintendent, but I would imagine when they open theirs, based on the way they talked about it a year ago, and some of the, the limits that they set. I think they anticipated they were gonna get several hundred students.
And they're still down four hundred.
They, they own, they gain less than a hundred, I think.
Yeah, I know, seventy-nine.
And, and so net, they're still down like four hundred, and I forget why, it'll, it'll be out soon officially. So I don't know, I would think we would have a pretty good number of students who would be interested, but you truly don't know.
Well, I think something you need to also consider is the recent changes for transfer requirements for IHSA as well.
That's also a factor.
Yes.
And I talked with coaches about that last year. Some were very, very excited about that change. I had to remind them, that's not all, again, that's not all roses like you think it is.
No, it's not.
Other things to think about.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, so, but again, it depends. If we only did elementary, I think you would get some. I would imagine that actually our high school is probably one of our most attractive places people might want to come to. But that also may be something we would decide isn't necessarily where we want to add students either, so I don't, I don't know. It's just.
Food for thought.
If we want to start thinking, I can start doing some homework and thinking about it if we want to talk about it, but I just. All the things I've shared, I haven't changed my mind about it. I want you to be thoughtful. And, and in fairness to the community, I think we would want to have several months of conversation and letting our community feel like they're a part of this conversation. Versus a surprise, the board just decided to make this change, because I don't think that will work well in Noblesville.
The Dollars and Cents side, great job on that. How much, like, hits have we been getting?
Oh, uh, I don't know, Mark can pull that.
Yeah, I'll find out. I, you know, it's like, oh, there's no transparency. It's like, well, this, there's been a ton of transparency, right?
Yeah, you have to look at it. Yeah, you have to look at it, though.
Yeah.
Mere existing doesn't provide.
People say, well, the board hides everything. Have you ever been to a board docs? What's that? Well. Go have a look, go have a look.
We had two extra financial meetings just in the last two months that we didn't have, like, you know, like this one on the board, you know, so a lot more medias to talk about it.
I I think the thing to do would be have a virtual school, and I know it's a lot of work.
Well, we've talked about that too.
But when you look at the, when you look at all those reports, that's where all those kids go that is virtual schooling.
I think we have to dissuade virtual schools as much as possible. It's bad for kids.
It's bad for kids.
Do we do we have Noblesville here?
The fact is, they do it, but.
The reason we haven't done it, we we literally just talked about this with Scott and Lani yesterday. The the main reason we have not in all the schools really moved forward on that yet, because we've talked about it several times, truly is philosophically, we just believe that anything we do as homeschools, we want it to be a high quality.
Yes.
Right.
Product that is in line with what what we believe we're producing for every child who comes here.
Sure.
I have a lot of questions and concerns about the quality of what a lot of these virtual schools are doing. So it is possible to do it high quality, and we we still may want to enter that game at some point. We just need to make sure that we're going to feel proud putting a Noblesville diploma tied to what comes of that.
I think that's a conversation we should consider far above open district.
Oh, I don't. I think it has, it's at some point, it's going to be one or the other.
Yes.
How many homeschools do we have that are going through a approved course of some sort, right, online? Is that normally what?
Homeschool?
Is that what they do?
Or are you just talking virtual?
Well, no, like someone that is homeschooling throughout Indiana that could actually do a virtual online class with Noblesville schools.
They're not counted.
I mean, are we talking about like a midwestern market area for something like that?
So if when you, again, maybe, how about, I think tentatively we should plan that maybe the January work session, by then I should have the new student enrollment report, and maybe we should just spend some time on.
Yeah, let's do that.
Let's.
I think I have.
Let's, let's.
But well, we gotta, we gotta go.
We gotta wrap it up because I gotta get ready, but.
So but I think we could go to have, talk about open enrollment and virtual.
Virtual school.
Yep.
Because at some point, we continue to lose two hundred students a year. We're going to have to do something.
Yeah.
Oh, I already have it down. I already had this good idea. I already got it written down, January.
Uh, but we will have to change.
I think you'd mention that.
Yeah, we talked about like.
Okay.
There are hybrid options, you know, yeah.
So Dan, Dan and Karen are going to send out a calendar soon.
For next year.
For next year, for our work sessions and our board meetings. Everybody needs to look at it and say, I need to move this one, this one, this one, if they know now. Like we talked last night, we already know we have to move the January work session, because you're not going to be here.
Yeah, there was January, if we could.
Oh, okay.
So 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 whenever, as soon as.
We have it about ready. I'll I'll send it out maybe even yet this week. Few, I'll I'll tell you this in email to remind you, because you don't have to remember from now. July is always one that I feel like every year, since I got here, we end up having to shift it because people have vacations. So if you already know your vacation, please look very carefully in July. So we have to move it later. Just go ahead and figure it out.
I have the school board meeting as well.
So that's fine, but if we know now, we'll just, you can just approve them and then we don't have to move it later. And there are, there are at least.
So just compare the calendars.
I think there's at least two work sessions that I anticipate we're going to have to get. We're going to have to be, go off our normal Tuesday just because of some realities. One of them is related to bargaining, and I'll try to explain that in the email, so you'll see. I have a suggestion for where I think we should put it, and then there was another one, I forget.
Um, ISBA.
ISBA, thank you, because we will be back in time.
So but if everybody would take the time, if you know your vacation, then that way, when we approve the calendar in Ja- in our January board meeting.
So I'm going to give it to you now, so they just have two months.
And then schedule, if it's not already, schedule your vacation around the meeting.
Try to work around it.
Right.
So I'll give it to you about two months early, so by January we should have.
And then if Ki- and then I know it's a lot of work for Karen, but I think in the past, she's then sent us calendar invites. Once we.
Yeah, she'll do that.
Approve it in January, that I think that makes it.
Okay.
Yep.
That makes it good. Okay.
That and subscribe to the school district's calendar, and it should auto populate.
You can't, it's hard, you can't anymore. It's harder for next year. Hmm, I don't know. I'll, we'll talk about that, because I subscribe to it.
No tour today? I don't think we have time.
I gotta go.
Okay, wait, 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 we got public comment.
Public comment.
No one's here. Um, next board meeting is Tuesday, November eighteenth, here, six o'clock, regular board meeting. Um, I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Ms. Dean, Brett, okay, for the discussion, motion carried, adjourned at two fifty four.
Two fifty four, all right.
We gotta go home and change.
Okay.
I'll come right back.
We'll see you at the high school.
Our high school.
You're coming in door fifty.